All right. Okay, good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming up there and getting on our on live. Call our December 10th meeting of the County Planning Commission to order. Is there any public comment?
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming up there and.
I've got feedback. Is that coming?
Yeah. Call our December 10th meeting of the County.
Or delay.
Rossa. Is there any public comment? Okay, good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming up there and.
I've got feedback. Is that coming?
Joe is coming to fix it.
Or delay.
Rossa. Yeah, we're ready. Is there any public comment? Okay, good morning, everyone.
They keep repeating.
It likes my voice.
Yeah.
Delay.
Rossa. Yeah, we're ready. Is there any public comment?
They keep repeating.
Good.
I can add it now.
All right.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Any public comment? Hearing none. Let's move on to approval of our minutes. Had a copy. They received a copy of our minutes from the November meeting. additions, corrections. Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, John Postus.
John, seconded by Jerry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Minutes are approved. Bills. Could you briefly go through the bills quickly?
Everything normal. Sapa bill for October. Five seventy-two. Our comprehensive plan, long-range plan, Luzerne County, two bills for fifty-four hundred dollars. EBA engineering is our GIS support. And for some reason, the West Payment Center, which is our zoning and planning law report. They decided to send everything online, and I did not get an October or November bill, but I got a notice that we didn't pay them. I have no idea where the. So I told them to send paper copies. Make it easier.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on the bill? Hearing none. Entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cindy. Second?
I'll second it, Bruce. I mean, Harry.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Bills are approved. Let's move on to our communications. More grant applications.
Yeah, the. The entire package is. Letters of support and. Just correspondence that the plans meet the requirements. Of zoning subdivision and those kind of things.
Any noteworthy projects in there we should know about?
No. I mean, again, why we have to review some of these is beyond me. Fixing windows or putting in roofs. Has nothing to do with zoning or comprehensive plans.
Yeah.
And again, it's mostly the local share money from Monroe County?
There's multimodal from D C E D, local share. Multimodal from Penn Dot, which I didn't understand because I didn't think their. Window was open yet for grants, but we did get one of those. And then there were some other ones. But basically, they're all the. D C E D local.
Yeah, and mostly LSAs.
Yep. Okay. Anybody have any questions on the communications? Let's move on to old business, transportation planning.
Okay. Penn Dot this year that they did their planning partners meeting, you know, differently. They were done virtually. On two separate days. We had an afternoon session at the beginning of November. And we had a morning session at the end of. Normally, we meet in Harrisburg and or State College. It's a two and a half day affair. They did virtually actually because of the pandemic. And. One of the things that they were able to do was a survey question through the presentation for presenters' questions. And the survey question, the demonstration question, Harry, you'll be interested in this, was. Who attended all of the planning partners meetings? And you're looking at them.
Hey.
For you. Good for you. Attaboy.
Yeah.
Nineteen eighty-three was the first one.
Don't do anything to get out of the office.
Wow.
Where it was?
You need an award.
Yep.
Harry, you remember where the first one was?
I want to say Seven Springs.
You're right.
Wasn't really?
Yep.
It was a hundred years ago.
They had it at the beginning of November, and it was eighty-seven degrees.
Yeah, we drove out there.
Yeah, the planning partners meeting went pretty good. Doing it. As I said, remotely, virtually. I'm not sure if there's going to be a spring planning partners meeting. They're undecided yet. Most likely, it'll be virtual. Because as far as we've heard, Penn Dot will not be opening any of their offices until at least May.
Wow.
Wow.
And the district office, because they were under remodeling and reconstruction, they're looking at July. Network planning, Steve Solin and Jay Chapman. Went out and did the HPMS sections this year. We had a hundred and fourteen sections. They got them all in on time, actually early to Penn Dot. Still working on the functional classification. They kind of put that on hold while they were working on HPMS. So that's. That's going to be done. Hopefully, functional class will be working on through December and January. And. The long-range plan, I'll just hold it up. I just printed it out. Done. It's going to be going out for public comments. The next week or so. So. We'll be emailing the links to that. You can take a look at it if you have any comments. That'll be going out to the MPO. Board, tech and. Coordinating committees and the advisory committees for any comments. And then we have to follow the forty-five day comment period for that. Have a public care, a public meeting, public hearing. We need to adopt it by February fourth.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? Steve, one question. What's the status of the, what does a Penn Dot need six hundred million dollars to complete some projects this year?
Okay. All of the legislators, if you saw them on TV in the last couple of weeks, were all up in arms that they didn't know anything about this. We've been discussing it since February. What it comes down to is. With pandemic, people were working from home. They weren't traveling, which meant gas taxes were going down. Along with the better cath standards. Which are, you know, getting better mileage on your cars. You're not using as much gas. And that foresaw this problem all the way back in February. We actually talked about it at our planning partners meeting in February. What it comes down to is there's not enough revenue to cover all of the expenses. I'm not sure where the disconnect was between Penn Dot administration and legislature. The main thing is, a lot of the funding that you think goes from the gas tax to fix roads goes to pay for the state police. Somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty percent of Penn Dot's budget goes to pay for the state police.
Wow.
So if they had that money, they could continue doing all of the road work. There is actually a survey going on on Penn Dot's website right now to come up with alternative funding sources. Everything from tolling certain bridges. To eliminating the gas tax and putting a tax on by mileage. So when you go in to get your car inspected, they will record the mileage. And bill you from what the mileage was the last time you went in, what the difference is. There's also congestion pricing that they're looking at in some of the bigger cities like Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. And one of the other things that's going to create a ripple effect in less gas taxes is the increase in the use of electric vehicles. Gas tax. When they're using the same roads.
So are we going to borrow the money to finish these projects? Or are we going to like just borrow some of the money to finish some of them? I mean, what, any idea yet?
No idea. We haven't heard anything from central office. Like I said, they're. They're putting out these surveys now to try and come up with alternatives, but whatever they come up with isn't going to be immediate. I don't know what the legislature is looking at doing. I saw something. Through the governor's office, one of the emails that came out that they were looking at some funding that was available through the treasures. Department of Treasury, some unobligated funding to carry over, but they would have to replace that. I'm not sure what they're going to do.
Harry? On an email I got yesterday from FIA, which is Pennsylvania Highway Information Association. It said that the, I didn't get to delve into it, but it said the projects would. The construction projects underway will will continue to be funded. There's some kind of deal they're working out, like. Steve said, some kind of borrowing from the, or bonding or something. So. But the revenue that's lost is lost. They're never going to make up that gap that was not collected. So it's. It's going to be a future problem that goes with what Steve said. So about alternative sources. So. Keep our fingers crossed. Nothing's immediate, you know?
I just wonder if we had any local projects that were going to be really impacted by this.
And from what I understand, most of our local projects, the funding is in place. They were going to finish out. So we're not really going to have any, any problems in Lockland County. There may be one or two Luzerne County that are delayed. But that's not definite yet. And this all stems from the fact that Penn Dot has not been getting enough funding. The TFA commission a couple of years ago. Said that they needed to get somewhere in the neighborhood of seven and a half billion dollars to continue construction. And through all of the revenue sources, they've been getting less than half that. So even in that situation, they're not catching up to. What's needed to just keep the status quo.
Um, any other questions for Stephen?
Just an interesting statistic, and Steve, maybe you can verify this. When I worked for a very short stint at Penn Dot. I was told that. Pennsylvania has more roads than New York, New Jersey, and all the New England states combined.
Correct.
I thought that was true.
Lockland County, I believe, is third or fourth with the number of interstate lane miles in the Commonwealth.
Wow.
I mean, there are some counties that have absolutely no interstates running through them.
Yeah, yeah.
Five.
Wow. Yep.
We also lead the nation in bridges, too.
Yep.
That's what.
That's one of the problems with bridges. And John will verify this. The majority of bridges were built. Fifty to sixty years ago with the interstate construction, and the lifespan of a bridge is fifty years.
Yep.
So. When they were building all these interstates, they took into account maintenance that was going to be needed and rehabilitation.
Any other questions? Let's move on to our bicycle study.
Okay.
Another one.
Bicycle study. You'll also be getting an email link for that once we finalize it. As we know, the main thing with the bicycle study was do low hanging fruit, what we can do quickly and cheaply to get a bicycle network in both Scranton and. Wilkes-Barre in the downtowns. And the program or the process will go all the way up to looking at the reversible spruce and linen streets downtown. So. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. The idea is to get the bike study enacted and to start working that into the transportation improvement program, the process. And also into the twelve-year and twenty-year programs. So that when a construction job comes up on the roadway, we can incorporate bicycle and pedestrian improvements in that, in that job.
Good. Any questions on the bicycle study? Hearing none. Let's move on to Sapa. See, we have a meeting today, huh?
We have a meeting today at two o'clock. Yep. We haven't had a committee meeting since the last time we met, but like I said, we are having one today at two. I have been talking with Carolyn from E P D. On the various municipalities that she's been working with. What I want to do today is each. I wanted, from each municipality, I want to know what the status is, and I need to give them. The last, the date, the last for the planning commissions to recommend. So we can meet, we can make this whole thing work in March. Clark Summit, I know, Jerry, maybe you could tell me you were a little ahead of everybody. You were going to pass it. Did you do that or?
We absolutely did, and we also did a proclamation for Denise and Shannon Brown.
Right.
All their, Denise put an awful lot of time on it, and she kept. She kept this drive moving, and we were grateful for that. But so we just hope that. The other boroughs and townships continue and.
Yeah.
Get started. Thank you.
Seems to be on track there. I mean, everybody's in various states. So that's why I said I wanted to get a specific. Each municipality specific on what they're doing, and this is your, like, this is the date you have to act on, and then we'll meet again in mid-January to see what. How everybody's doing. I know we have not heard anything from Don King. I don't know if, John, you've heard anything. Carolyn has not heard from Don at all either, so. Right now, Scranton really is the only one that we're kind of wondering what's going on with.
We haven't had a planning commission meeting since. Since February. So Donnie and I talk about this all the time. He's, he's trying to get a virtual meeting or even a. Maybe using the greenhouse at Naog or something. We have new members. But this is one of the items. Plus, we have some internal stuff we have to get through. So we do talk about it, but. He's aware of it, and, you know, I would rest assured that he'll get it through, you know?
Yeah, and he's going to be on the meeting this afternoon, so.
Well, good. You can get an update from him. Yep.
Yeah.
Great. Anybody have any questions on Sapa? John, thanks for joining us.
Hey, Harry, how are you? Sorry I'm running late.
Not a problem. Glad you made it. Thank you.
Hi, Dave.
Good.
Hey, John.
We started the meeting without you, Dave.
As always, please do.
I'm glad you made it, though. Stephen, real passenger?
Okay, we have not really had any meetings during the pandemic. However, you probably saw the article in the paper last week about Amtrak looking at Scranton to New York. As an extension to their service. We did send out an email. To Bob Morgan at Congressman's Office, to Larry Mosky and to Larry West about getting the committees back together and. Reply to my email was they've been talking between themselves about having a meeting in January. So we'll be looking to have a meeting sometime in January and get the process started again. We've got a lot, as Larry Mosky said, we've got a lot of stars aligning. We have a pro rail president. President Biden elect. Rode the rails. He rode Amtrak from Delaware to Washington, so he knows the value of railroads. He's a Scranton guy. Congressman Cartwright is going to be on the Appropriations Committee with a chairmanship. And now we've got Amtrak on board, so there's a lot of things lining up that hopefully this will all come together. We'll have some more information. We'll get a little better handle on it at our January meeting.
They're trying to make the Binghamton connection with them. Is that what the?
If you remember, Harry, years ago, they did a study to reactivate the line from Buffalo. Through Binghamton to Scranton. That never really went anywhere, but then there was the push from people up in the southern tier of New York. Service from Binghamton to Scranton into New York City. So. I'm not sure what they're looking at. The map that they proposed just showed from Scranton to. New York to Hoboken, so.
Might have some, Jerry, never know.
So we're not sure, you know, how far the line would extend, but the first thing is to get the last twenty-one miles in New Jersey completed. And if Amtrak is behind it, that would give a lot more federal highway, excuse me, federal rail funding. So. Everybody seems optimistic, and we'll see what happens in January.
Let's hope for the best. Okay. Any questions? I see we have nothing going on for hazard mitigation, huh?
Still under review. They have until December fourteenth to give it back to us, so I'm hoping within the next two days, since the deadline's coming up. And hopefully, they're not going to have too many comments that have to be addressed. If they do, we have to address those, and then once everything's in place, we go to the commissioners for approval and then to the municipalities.
All our communities are on board?
Yes, all forty.
Great. Wow. Good, 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 good. And our Chesapeake Bay action plan?
We actually had, there was two meetings. I actually missed both because I had, my father had a doctor's appointment on one, and then I was busy with these COVID grants that we're working on. I missed the next one. I don't know if Brenda, is she still on the line? I don't know if she's got any information on this. I know they're looking, they want us to work with Susquehanna and Luzerne Counties. Because they don't have enough money to fund individual counties. And the Conservation District was supposed to be doing the, the lead on this, so I'm. I was told there's a grant due like next week, but. Like I said, I missed the last two meetings, so I don't know what the, what the status is.
Any questions? Let's move on to our development reviews.
Okay, excuse me one second. Harry, do you have a quorum if I leave?
Bruce, yes, we do. Thank you so much for attending. Bruce, have a. And Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Hanukkah starts today at five P M sundown, so don't forget your Jewish friends.
Yep.
See you, buddy. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Development reviews.
Okay.
You see, you did a lot of development reviews, huh?
He did them all.
I'll accept one. Yeah. If you don't know, Joanne left us.
Oh, jeez.
Only two months.
Oh, my God.
Oh, jeez.
She got a position in South Abington Township.
Ah, hmm, which paid a lot more.
Hard to believe.
Yep.
Okay.
So Mary Liz was tied up doing COVID grants all month. So I was back in the planning role doing subdivision land developments. And.
Let's go through the reviews. We'll come back to this issue when we get done with the review.
Okay. On page ten and eleven, Alpham Borough is updating their subdivision land development ordinance. Couple of things that they had in there were minor, but they had two things that really I, I hope they take notice of. They have a requirement that says. Any subdivision of more than two lots requires a hearing. But they don't mention land developments. And a million square foot warehouse has a little bit more of an impact on the community of three lots. So they should just. Put the word in there that land developments are included in that. One of the other things that we've run into this with a couple of municipalities. Of having cul-de-sacs off of cul-de-sacs. And how do you measure the length of the cul-de-sac? And I'm just recommending that they take the overall length of all cul-de-sacs into account. Because you can have a maximum of a six hundred foot cul-de-sac and then have three cul-de-sacs off of that, each six hundred feet. Which defeats the purpose of having the regulation in there. And there's a lot of communities that have that. We've run into it a couple of times in the past couple of months. And the last thing is. Again. When municipalities are looking at subdivision land development ordinances, I believe they are looking at them as residential developments for the most part, and their, their standards and regulations are on residential. We're getting a lot of these large warehouses now. Million square feet. There's the new. One new warehouse in Jessup. It's a mile and two tenths around the warehouse. The requirements are usually four, five, or six hundred feet from the property line for a fire hydrant. Well, that doesn't get you anywhere. If we went by that standard in the one development in Jessup, the closest fire hydrant to the building would have been about a mile away. Because the property line was that far away with the parking. So. You know, as a fire chief, this is a bugaboo of mine, and I did get Jessup to adopt an ordinance that there has to be a fire hydrant within six hundred feet of the building, and then. For every. Hundred thousand square feet of the building, they need an additional hydrant. And so far, the developers have been really. Attuned to that, and they've been doing it without any consequence, so. Okay, so that's. Alpham, on page twelve and thirteen, Lehigh Valley Medical Center. This is the new medical building that's going in Dixon City right off of Interstate eighty-one. They're actually doing a four-story building instead of a three-story building now. So they're going to need a variance from the girl for height on that. Also, the other big thing is the plan is showing three hundred and forty-nine off-street parking spaces. According to the ordinance, only one hundred and seventy-seven are required, so that's. Nearly double. What they need. And, you know, we've always had this discussion about overbuilding parking lots. I'm just recommending that they take a look at that because it's additional water runoff and additional point source pollution that has to be addressed. To eat things issue. Plus, the majority of the parking is in front of the hospital. Right up to the road. And, you know, for a development like this, and Dixon is coming in with, in their letters that, in correspondence. They're coming in for funding to do a gateway project along that part of Main Street.
Yeah.
Come in and plant trees and put pretty shrubs up and things like that, and then you're going to have a hospital with parking right up to the curb.
Right. Why don't they put the hospital in a different, like, behind it?
Well. The problem is, the original building, they're still, and they're adding on to it.
Right, yeah.
Building all the parking was in front.
Right.
They are putting some parking in the back, but they're also bringing the parking right out to the sidewalk. So we're just recommending, since they have more than they need, they might want to look at that. They can eliminate, I don't believe I wrote it in here, but they can eliminate like thirty spaces.
Yeah.
Lose anything and address the issue of. You know, having a gateway.
Right.
Steve, I have one comment. When the Wright Center took over the old giant. And then it was Banco Warehouse on Salt Washington Avenue, they put in a. Gigantic parking lot, and I said, I had no clue why they were doing it. But every time I drive by there, I don't, there's not a space open in the lot. There's hundreds of parking spaces, so unless their projections of use maybe dictate this, I don't know. But I agree with you. If it's not needed, it should be cut back, but. I. The Wright Center, I can't believe how many cars are parked there every day. It's constantly filled.
Yeah. So is the one in German when I drive by. Same thing.
You know what I mean? So unless their projections on patients or something dictates. You know, more than the requirements, I'm not saying they're right or wrong. Steve gives a great analysis here. If they're not needed, you know. One seventy-seven, do two hundred, do two twenty-five. You really need three fifty, but maybe they do. I don't know, so. I'm not deferring, but Steve is right. If it's not needed, it is a big taxation on the infrastructure and the environment and everything else.
Thank you. Okay, on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine. Lands of Roop in Carbondale Township. This is a strange development. It's on number seven road in Carbondale Township. And it also fronts out to Carbondale Road. There are five parcels there now. They want to subdivide one. To create six parcels. Three of the parcels are already developed. Two of those parcels are substandard in lot size. As part of the subdivision, they're going to increase the standards for those two, or increase the acreage in those two lots. When I did the review, they showed that there was public sewer. But they did not mention public water. The two lots that they were increasing the lot size on. I wasn't sure, as I said, if they had on-lot water. And the ordinance for either on-lot water and or on-lot sewer. They would not meet the requirement even with the expansions. So they're, because they were increasing the size but not getting to the requirement, they would need variances. Also, the fifth lot that they were subdividing. Had access to number seven road on one side and through a twenty-foot easement off of Carbonell Road on the other side. In cutting it in half, they eliminated the access to number seven road. Which then made the lot on Carbondale Road non-conforming because it doesn't front on a public street. They have an easement, but that's the only access, so they would need a variance on that, which. Most municipalities issue them. It's not a big deal. But the concern is. That resultant lot still could be subdivided into three other lots. So when I sent the draft review to Mendola Associates, they got back to me. Those two lots that I looked at that might be substandard because they didn't have on-lot water do have central water. So that requirement goes away. Also, they're going to address the access to the lot number five that it can't be further subdivided. Also, they're going to address the access to the lot number five, uh, that it can't be further subdivided. So those issues went away. So it's going from a withhold to a conditional approval. And this all happened after I put the packets together, so I cannot make that correction.
Dave, you have, you have Carbondale City checked in, just so you know.
Okay, I will go back and change that. It is Carbondale Township.
Yeah.
And last one on page 41. Just to note, this is Lands of LaBelle in North Abington. It's a two-lot subdivision. We are recommending approval of it. Uh, but just to know that I got the plans a week after the supervisors approved them. So we're letting the township, I already let the developer know that this could have been a problem. And the developer's an attorney, by the way. This could have been a problem if we found an issue with it, that we're getting it after the fact. We have 30 days under Act 247 to review a plan before anybody's supposed to take any action. So, um, the other note, and I've been noticing this on about a half dozen plans that I did. They're still referencing the 1973, 1974 floodplain ordinance maps. The, uh, the new maps went into effect August 5th. So I'm just noting that. It's not really making a difference for any of the plans we've gotten so far. Uh, they've all built in a non-flood area.
Anybody have any questions on any of the reviews?
No.
Hearing done, entertain a motion to approve the reviews as submitted by the staff?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Here, a second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Cindy. All a favor?
Yeah, and I don't know. I think there was one LaBelle in there. Do you want me to note that you abstained?
Is there a LaBella?
I thought I saw one.
Well, that's pop, the one is a Lands of LaBelle, but it's not, I don't think it's a LaBella. I, I looked through them. I didn't see any LaBelles.
Okay, cuz I did have somebody come in. Maybe it was just the stamp plans.
That was from last month, right?
Okay.
Okay, right. We might, you might've got one in for signature. Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything cuz I always check just to make sure.
Okay.
If, if he does come across one, John, he'll make sure you abstained on it.
Absolutely, but I think we're good this month.
Um, other business. One item, and Brenda, are you still there? Maybe you can.
I'm here.
Maybe you can shed, shed some light on it, since we, a staff member leave us already. How's we doing the budget?
Um,
What are we gonna do about the new staff?
So we
Big raises for everybody?
Oh, big raises. Yes, of course. Yes, yes, yes. If I, if I could give out the raises, they would all have very, very large raises. Yes. Especially, um, you know, this department, um, has been working really, really hard. Um, not sure if everyone was, is aware, but we received nine, almost $19 million in county relief block grant funding, and it's being administered out of this department. So we're all kind of going a little bit crazy, but it's all good. We wanna make sure that the money is impactful to the residents of Lackawanna County and, and benefits them. So we're, you know, Mary Liz is working really, really hard, um, in, in, in helping us. She's doing a lot of the nonprofit grants right now, administering those. Steve is, you know, reviewing plans and, uh, you know, he's doing a great job as he always does. So, um, the budget was passed. Again, uh, I'm not sure what will happen with the raises. That would happen in, in 2021 and, and that would be, um, you know, determined by, um, the, the commissioners. And the other, oh, okay, staffing, you asked me. So we have assistant planner. We lost Joanne Payne. Um, so we have that position open. If anyone, um, knows of anyone that could be a candidate or be interested in applying, that's on our county website. Um, transportation planner, um, we have been, we did interview an individual. Um, we're gonna be making a decision. That's a very difficult position, um, to, um, to find a candidate for, given the specialties, um, skills that you need. Both even the assistant planner and, and the transportation planner. So we're hoping, um, to possibly also start an internship, a paid internship, um, within the department and reaching out to, um, the various schools that offer programs related. So then that might help us to, um, you know, backfill in individuals as well. So I don't have anything definitive, but again, you know, would appreciate your help if you know anyone that could potentially be a good candidate for, to be part of the, you know, the transportation and planning.
I know, um, letters sometimes fall on deaf ears down the hall. But would it be of any value for us to send a letter down to the commissioners, uh, you know, requesting raises for the staff, considering what's been going on and to even increase the, the the pay for some of these positions, just like because Joanne left us for what? More money. It's like, you have all people, you know? I mean, is there any value to doing this, Brenda? I know in the past it's been a little tough, but I mean, if you, if, if you think it's a value, I think we're all on board on doing that.
Okay, I, I, I'll get back to you on that and maybe we can take it on, um, you know, uh, off to the side, do another little meeting together. We can maybe kind of brainstorm about how we think we could maybe restructure the department and that might be something that's potential as well, where then, you know, taking the salaries that we have and, and maybe looking at, um, how we could, um, maybe increase them in, in doing that.
Because, I mean, cuz that includes both you, Steve, Liz, and these two vacant positions. I mean, we've gotta, we've gotta do something to keep good people.
Yes, we do.
And to attract, to attract new people.
And, and, uh, to feed off what you're saying there, Harry, that, that's how we run it in Clark Summit. When you have good quality people that do above and beyond, you wanna make sure you maintain them financially. That's how you do it. You're exactly right there.
Um, please get to us. I mean,
Well, I will. Thank you. I appreciate.
Or we can work something out.
Yes, absolutely. And we have a great team. And, and, and like I said, you know, listen, Steve, they, they do a phenomenal job. And, um, you know, we, we are really trying to get everything accomplished that we need to in the next three weeks to make sure all of our money is spent wisely and that it's all spent. And that also we continue to do our regular jobs, which we're doing here every day. So.
I mean, where else were they gonna put an $18 million project? You got another apartment down there? Are they gonna handle something like that? I don't think so.
No, no.
Okay. And they, and they're getting away with it for no cost.
Right, cuz they're all multitasking.
Exactly. Now, come on. You know?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I preach to a crowd here, so, I mean, but please get to us. I mean, we will, I don't care if it's letters, uh, Zoom meeting, whatever it takes to, to talk to the guys, uh, and the girls too about it. Need to do something.
Hey, Harry, get it done before April, so I can get a raise before I retire.
I was just gonna say, if you're retiring, we'll have another position to fill.
That's gotta be possible.
I don't know. There's a rumor going around the building that I'm leaving too. I don't know who made that one up, but.
Oh, God, no.
I actually could retire too. I'm, I'm qualified, so.
Mary Liz, you can't go anywhere.
My husband tells me I can't leave cuz I, we need to be on my insurance.
Oh, well, there's always a good hang up there. That's good.
Had in the last, in the last, in the last two weeks, Steve Solan and I have both had about three or four different people ask us, what happened to Mary Liz? We heard she quit.
Oh, my gosh. Spinning. Amazing.
Anyway.
Fake news.
Yeah.
More fake news. Is there any other, uh, news, uh, news or information or work or ideas to come before the commission?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, I think the last time we discussed this actually was in February, our last in-person meeting, where I think some reappointments were made and so on and so forth, and they weren't quite right. And we're still down a member. Uh, and I, I think, uh, Steve or some reported that they were looking into this to get it all straightened out because there was a rush at the end of the previous administration to do some stuff. But I don't think it really caught up to the, what, what should be done. So, uh, we're down a member, which hurts, hurts with the quorms. And, uh, you know, the, the terms, I don't, I, I don't think they're right either. You know what I'm saying? Like some are expired, some have been extended. And they don't match up with the way that the staggering of terms. So I don't know if that's possible to get it straightened out, but, it's been on my mind for a while cuz we're always, you scramble because people have, you know, you, you try to have a quorum. Some days we have six or seven. Some days we scramble for, 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 uh, five. So it, it's hard. So that's, that's my comment.
I can speak to that. So
Okay, Brenda.
It, it is very important to the commissioners to get our boards in order. Um, and there was a lot of scrambling that happened in, in the previous, um, a, a, administration. So we are diligently going through e- each
Okay.
Board and authority and addressing it. Our hope is in, in January, we will be able to have e- every one of them set straight so that, um, you know, all of the, the reappointments are done and they're done properly and everything's in line. So, you know, I can definitely assure you that we will have that fixed next year.
Thanks, Brenda. And, and maybe get another member to fill us, fill us out?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You guys have any recommendations? Let me know.
Okay, no problem there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any region we're lacking someone in, Harry? You know what I'm saying? Like
Yeah, I think we were looking for Carbondale because that's the only area.
Like something up Valley, up Valley.
Rose had mentioned Paul Kazmarsik. He's a school board member. Uh, he used to be the principal of the high school years ago when I was there. He is a great guy. I mean, I don't know, you know, Rose, I guess, knows him too, if he'd be interested.
Valley, alright. Any other comments? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, just one thing, Harry, before, just to let the board know, um, with the pandemic and everything, with the governor's orders, we're gonna be changing how we staff the office. Brenda put together a list. The community development side of the office will be mostly in on Mondays and Tuesdays. The planning side will be mostly in on Thursdays and Fridays with, uh, nobody in on Wednesday. And, uh, the other times we'll be working from home. The county did buy or purchase, uh, surfaces. Steve Solan and I just got ours this morning. That's why there was a little bit of confusion trying to get set up. But, uh, we'll be able to work from home. So we will physically be in the office at least two days a week.
And what'd you say they purchased?
Surface, surface computer.
Oh, surfaces, Microsoft Surface.
Yes. Yep.
They didn't show us how to use them. They just.
If you can come over, I'll give you a tutorial.
Download the 150-page, uh, learning guide from, from online.
I will say they're actually one of the easier, um, laptops to, to use. And they're light, so they're, they're easy to, to, to take with you. So I like it. You should, you'll end up liking it, Steve. I know you're just gonna love it and never, ever want a desktop again.
You know, I, I'm surprised as how much I can do on my iPhone cuz I'm, I participate in all my meetings by my iPhone and it's, it's pretty, it's pretty adaptable to all these, you know, Zoom, Microsoft Teams, uh, Skype and different other ones. It's, it's, it's adaptable and it works pretty well, you know?
Yeah, I'll give you a little tidbit that I learned when I first, when we were working home, when we had the stay-at-home order. What, in the iPhone, I use it as, as well a lot for work. And in the camera, you can actually, or in the notes, if you click on the camera, you can scan a document on your iPhone.
Wow.
So if you go to your notes and then you'll see a camera icon, you click on it and it says scan document. And it works really, really well to have a scanner on the fly.
Wow.
That's good information to know. Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome. I use it a lot.
Good. Any other comments? Hearing done, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Done. Very good.
Okay, well, Merry Christmas to everybody and have a wonderful holiday.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Right, stay safe. Stay safe. Talk to you guys next year.
Yeah.
Bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.